Good evening. Welcome to the September 5th meeting of the Newmarket Town Council. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we start with a public forum this evening. If anybody from the public is here that has comments. Seeing no one at the dice, we close public forum at 7:01 and open a public hearing. And the public hearing is on the CDBG grant money for upgrades to 50 residential units at Great Hill Terrace. And Town Administrator will begin the discussion.
Sure. As the council is aware, that community development block grant funds are available to towns through the New Hampshire CDFA. Up to $500,000 annually is available on a comparative basis for public facilities and housing projects, and up to $500,000 for economic development projects, and up to $350,000 for emergency activities that directly benefit low and moderate income persons. Up to $12,000 per study is available for planning grants. The purpose of this hearing is to update the public on and take public comment on the progress of the CDBG grant that Newmarket was awarded for $500,000. Of that, $25,000 for administrative costs. The remaining $45,000 was sub-granted to the Newmarket Housing Authority for upgrades to 50 residential units at Great Hill Terrace, Newmarket's low-income public housing project, which is operated by the Newmarket Housing Authority at 34 Gordon Avenue. The first phase of the project, the office renovation, is complete. The Newmarket Housing Authority paid for this portion as part of their project matching funds. The second phase, which is the dwelling units bathroom renovations, is 60% complete. As 30 of the 50 bathrooms are complete, the rest of the bathroom renovations will be completed in October. Southern Hampshire Services, Weatherization Department is doing energy improvements funded by Eversource. This work includes attic insulation, bathroom fans, air sealing, LED light fixtures, and bulbs, and energy-star refrigerators. The third phase of the project is the underground sewer pipe replacement, which will be put out to bid shortly. So that's the update.
Anything else we should do?
Just ask the public if there's any comments.
Public, are there any comments? Seeing none, then we close public hearing, I guess.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It only took me an hour and a half to do that.
I thought about that.
If you want to say something.
Maybe you're my key.
Okay. Moving on. Consider acceptance of the August 22nd, 2018 meeting minutes. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second?
Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Council Burns.
Sting?
You're correct.
Oh, okay. Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Next, we move to the Town Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item on my report is that, as many of you are aware, the cost of recycling for municipalities is increasing greatly. This is due to the struggling recycling processing market in China. Many municipalities are looking at ways to save money, including some are suspending the recycling of certain materials such as glass. Newmarket, as you're aware, is in consortium with the towns of Newfields and Stratum for waste management. We negotiate our contracts as one to save money, and we've been meeting recently to see if there's ways we can reduce the cost. One item that we're looking at would be to automate recycling collection. What this means is that the town would provide the residents with new 96-gallon recycling bins that have covers and wheels. With a larger size, recycling would only be collected once every other week, reducing the cost of collections. In addition, the new bins would actually reduce the amount of materials blowing around in the community. This is still a preliminary discussion, as we were working out the costs, examining financing the business through our savings that we'd have from the collections. In addition, we're eligible for grants from conservation groups for some of the costs of the bins, since the new bins would reduce the amount of errant waste. I'll keep the council posted. Any programs would not begin till late spring, early summer next year. This would not impact the pay-as-you-throw program, as that would be a revenue reduction for the community, as we could not monitor pay-as-you-throw bags being put into the trucks because it's an automatic pickup. There's no human out there picking up the bins at this point. So you can't take out the bags. And we're talking with Casella, and they're trying a system up Main that involves RFID's, but it's still really preliminary at this point for pay-as-you-throw communities.
What's an RFID?
It's a little radio frequency identification device.
Okay.
A lot of your watches and everything have that now, so.
Key fobs?
Yes, key fobs. Thank you. Your key fob that you use. The next is that the town of Newmarket and the Nature Conservancy has submitted a grant application for the restoration of Bay Road's crossing of Loverland Creek. The project will achieve three primary goals: one, to restore the aquatic connectivity of the system's tidal and freshwater interface, allowing dietamarus fish passage at the perched Bay Road culvert; and two, to enhance the resilience of Loverland Creek's salt marsh, Great Bay's estuary's second-largest continuous salt marsh by removing the existing tidal restrictions at Bay Road with a structure that will allow upstream salt marsh migration; and also to remediate the flood hazard of this road-stream crossing which overtops during flood events and thereby compromises public safety and contributes excess sediments and nutrients to Great Bay. The town of Newmarket is actually going to be the lead project management efforts for construction efforts, but the Nature Conservancy is responsible for post-construction monitoring. Total cost of this project is estimated to be $411,500. As of right now, we're requesting $200,000 through the aquatic resource mitigation grants through Department of Environmental Services. We are looking for other grants as well to reduce the cost even greater. Finally, members of the council should have received notice of the 2019-2020 New Hampshire Municipal Association Legislative Policy Conference. The Legislative Policy Conference is a culmination of a long process which the NHMA determines what issues it will lobby for on behalf of the municipalities. The NHMA, if you're not aware, is the voice of the New Hampshire cities and towns before the legislature and state agencies, so they are lobbyists. Adoption of legislative policy allows your municipal voice to be heard through the action of your organization, the NHMA. By adopting the legislative policy, local officials can tell elected representatives what they feel are the major concerns for cities and towns. The NHMA Board of Directors oversees the advocacy activities. As the council may be aware, I am a member and the past president of the Board of Directors of the NHMA. The Legislative Policy Positions direct the board and the NHMA staff and representative municipalities. And how do we get there? In the spring of each year, each, even number year, the NHMA forms Legislative Policy Committees addressing different aspects of municipal government. The three committees for this year are the Finance and Revenue, which I happen to be Chair, General Administration and Governance, and the Infrastructure Development and Land Use Committees. These three committees consider issues and problems derived from their own experience as well as local officials, issues sent in by other members or brought to them by staff, past policy positions, and issues resulting from recent legislative sessions. Each committee holds several meetings during the spring and develops policy recommendations to be voted on by the member municipalities at the Legislative Policy Conference. On September 21st, it will be the Legislative Policy Conference. So at that session, each municipality has one vote on any of these topics there. If no one wishes to attend on behalf of the town for the council, I have to be there as Chair of the Finance and Revenue Committee because I have to get the report out what we did during the spring. I did attach the policy proposals to the report if there are any questions on them. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chair. Then Goal Setting's the next thing.
Yes. Any comment on the Town Administrators, comments, questions, Town Administrator's Report?
Just what's the timeframe again? I didn't have time to read the whole thing, but there was a lot of very interesting things in there proposed.
Oh.
So when are you looking for either feedback or, I know it's coming up on September 21st?
If there's an issue with any of the policies, the council as a whole has to change, has to vote to either not recommend. It can't be one individual. If it's as-is, I go only to vote.
On behalf of Newmarket, right?
On behalf of Newmarket. But if, say, if you want me to oppose something, the council as a whole would have to tell me at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you for.
Yeah.
Okay. So.
Yeah. I was happy to be aware of that and see and understand, you know, more about your representation of the town of Newmarket through that process, so it was good to have.
Yeah. And I can tell you, we haven't, they're long, but we haven't had a contentious one. Traditionally contentious issues, gambling, education funding, things that normally are. And I can tell you, the Municipal Association takes no position because it puts town versus town.
Yeah.
So that's, you don't, we don't fight, we don't have our association fight each other. So.
So I'll just comment. I was really happy to see it included in the packet, so it's part of record, and the public can also see the items as well. So maybe that, my suggestion would be, can we continue to do that? I don't know if that's been done in the past, or was just because?
It's once every two years. I usually hand it out to the council.
It is in there? Okay. All right.
Yeah. It's also on the Municipal Association's website, nhmunicipal.org.
Yeah.
There's minutes to all the meetings. It's just like a municipality, they have all the records there as well.
Yeah.
So.
There's some, there's some really interesting items in there, so I'm gonna give it a more close gander before the next meeting.
So do we, as a council, need to recommend or not recommend these?
You don't have to. I mean, if there's, usually, if it's a red.
But if there's opposition, only if there's opposition.
If there's a red flag, I would, yeah.
Okay.
Because that would be kind of, you'd be sitting here for, go through them all.
Right. Well, it didn't seem anything, I didn't see anything there that I had a real high desire to take a position on, or it didn't seem controversial to me, so. But I still, it's good to understand how that process works. The other thing, on your, in your ongoing projects section, there's a couple of things. I was looking, we're going to move on to goals next, and when I was looking at some of the documents I've collected, there was actually one from Counselor Finch back that had been to a session, and it talked again about the Candidates' Night, which we failed to, we didn't have one last time because.
The municipality, we do not sponsor Candidates' Night.
Right, right. And I understand that. But I would like to, I think the municipality could find out if there's a sponsor out there.
I would prefer my office not do that, just so we can remain, my office during all elections and all staff remain neutral. And I don't want to put us in a position where it seems like we're favoring one candidate or another by scheduling a candidates forum. That's why we don't, we don't even allow, I recommend that employees don't attend Candidates' Night so it doesn't look like they favor one candidate or the other.
Okay. But I think it is, as your document said, it's seen by the community as a, you know, for those people that want to know what the positions of the candidates are, and with, you know, it's not the kind of thing that's in the press a lot anymore. There's really no good substitute for that at the town level. So is it, is there any problem with one of us? And I'd be happy to do it, reaching out. The NBA has been the sponsors in the past, right?
If, yeah, I don't have, if some, NBA wants to do it again, yes, but I don't think it should be, I don't think staff time should be placed on that.
Right. But what I, my point is, I'd like to find out from the NBA whether they plan to do it, and if they don't plan to do it.
That's your prerogative as a counselor, but, yeah.
Okay.
And even if there was like a day that we supported and then we had to find a sponsor, and there was no sponsor, then we can't run one quarter day.
We had it. It's, what it was usually the Tuesday before the election, hasn't it been in the past? And the town has contributed the space for that.
We, yeah, we have no issue with the space. We have no issue filming it. We just don't use staff time.
Right. So there's really no need for the sponsor to do a lot of work, other than provide their sponsorship?
They need to, well, they need to find a moderator. They need to set up the rules. They need to.
But hasn't it been the same moderator almost every?
Yeah. It's been switching. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'll have, you have more, probably more com, but we can talk about that.
Yeah.
Because I think we should, it's not too early to nail down who that person will be. We'll be there before we.
It's right around the corner.
Yeah. Especially with the loss of extra newsletter coverage. That's been, last election cycle, there was like nothing in the paper, so.
Okay. And along those lines, because it's also the NBA, is that we're still waiting for them to get back to make a comment on the parking.
Parking.
Parking. And it's been spring.
Spring.
Spring. That you can.
I can, yeah, absolutely.
That you can ask them.
But the individual, I don't think the business is there.
Okay. So, and you are, are you the liaison to the NBA?
Aye.
So I would, I would say, put that in the list, you know, your ongoing projects list.
I don't go, I don't, if he, I mean, if Counsel Bowden goes to the meetings, he probably would see it before I will.
Okay.
So.
And when is your next meeting for that?
I'll, I think, Chuck. He's probably, he's probably got better communications with than I do.
Yeah. Well, okay, but I still, I hear what you're saying about the project, but I just, you know, some of these things, they just kind of get lost if they, that's one of the, when we had the MRI, talked about it, having a place where there are things that are, we're trying not to lose track of. So that's why I was suggesting that that.
Okay.
Having a placeholder there that says, "We have not heard from."
Again, yeah. I mean, again, the Candidates' Night, I would not put on my list because it's not my, it's definitely not town staff project.
Yeah, I got that. I'm not asking, but the parking thing is kind of.
We're waiting, yeah.
But, but that, because I look at those things, and a lot of them, you know, are that thing, but I think that's where things like that go, is so that we can keep track of, you know, so that it doesn't die.
Right.
So, okay. And we move on to.
I had a couple.
Sure, go ahead.
Quick items. Hopefully quick. One was, you mentioned the Municipal Association. Is the conference coming up?
That will be November, it's the 14th?
Okay.
Around that time?
That's a.
I think they just.
It's a great one to put on the calendar, because I really, I've enjoyed going.
It's in your magazines. I don't announce it. Yeah, I haven't.
It's in the magazine. Usually, sometimes it's on the back cover when it gets a little closer, but it's not there yet.
Yeah.
All right. So November 14th, 15th. And then I had another item. I can bring it up now, or I can bring it up in closing comments, but I think it probably makes sense to talk about during this portion of it. Weed control. I had sent an email. I received an email from a concerned constituent who, you may, people may or may not be aware, but there's a recent finding in a lawsuit where glyphosate, which is the ingredient in Roundup, was found to be causing cancer, and a person was awarded like $230 million. And we are currently, as a, in Newmarket, for weed control, using that same ingredient.
They're looking at alternatives.
Yeah.
So, we want to make sure that the material actually works. That's the issue.
Yep.
So, but at this point in time, the city of Dover switched recently, I think, maybe Portsmouth did too. I'm not hearing good things from those communities with the stuff they're using, so we're trying to find out. And we contract that out, so we're asking them to look into it.
It's always a tough balance. You want something that's efficient and works, but something that maybe doesn't cause cancer. So I wanted to bring.
Whether it does or not is very controversial as well.
Right, right.
Just to tag on to that, could we look at limiting places where it's used in town, possibly?
It's used limited. It's usually sidewalks, buildings. That's it.
Sidewalks. I don't know.
Well, if, no, we're gonna have bricks with a lot of grass coming up from it, so.
Okay.
And then the only other item that I had, and again, that could be one of those ongoing projects, is the status of the facility review. I saw the facilities director here in our audience, so I didn't, not that I'm asking to.
No, no, no.
But just where we're at, where, what we can expect.
It's part of the CIP process. That was the initial plan. The facilities report is turned over to the CIP. They're gonna prioritize those projects and come up when you get the CIP.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and.
Which is also goal one. To segue into the next item.
I planned that.
So we move on to goal-setting at this point. So getting that, and has everybody got their report available to them then, so that we can kind of refer to it as we go through? I don't know. What was the date we actually had the session?
April 11th.
April 11th. So it's been a while to refresh your memory, but I'd be curious to start with, and perhaps it's easy, just, we never officially ratified these, and some of the other, we presented some other ones, but is there anybody that wishes there was another goal that was one of our top three goals, other than the three that are presently here? Because if, if there.
Yeah. And after I can give an update where we are.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But if everybody is content with the three goals that are here, then I think the, I don't know that we need to take a vote to it, but we can consider these formally ratified in public session. And just, it probably, we, the public will be, if they haven't seen this report, the public will be informed of what those goals are.
Yep.
As you update us on them.
Yep. Just to, if you want to update, kind of, because I was looking at, we actually made a lot of progress on these already.
Right. So we can, we can, we will, we have ratified the goals because the town counselors are aware of the goals and don't want to change any of those. They were never officially ratified before. And now we'll go through them one by one and get a ratification. I'm gonna get an update on what the, what's happened with these.
Sure. The first goal is the facilities plan that coordinates the CIP. We have had, we've completed inventory of all town properties in its current condition. The priority list is now going to be going to the CIP committee as part of their process. It'll be included in the plan that will be delivered to us by October 1st pursuant to the town charter. So we are moving forward on that one pretty rapidly. The second is economic development. We're having the joint meeting with the planning board at the next town council meeting.
Can I go back to that just one second? The, on the, so when the town council will first sort of see that rolled out is during the CIP portion of our budget discussions at the, on our workshop day?
Correct.
That's when we will sort of have the first discussion within the council.
We have two different documents. One, we have the condition of all the facilities, which you have seen.
Right.
And now it's to prioritize it, which is the CIP committee's, well, it's department head and CIP committee's role. Because the department head goes through and makes the recommendations, and then the CIP committee says, okay, it may not be a high priority what the department head says. It may be a lower priority, and they determine that and move it forward to the council. So.
Right, right. And then we will sort of see the result of that process.
As part of the budget.
Right. Which, and upfront on our workshop day, which is the Saturday, last Saturday in October.
Correct. Or on a separate night.
Okay.
Just because I, if it, I don't want to be spending four to five hours here just doing the CIP, because we'd rather get the departments done, and we can do it on a separate night if need be.
Okay.
Yeah. The second is economic development. So we said the joint meeting is at the next meeting. We are exploring cost of hiring an economic development consultant, and we're looking at whether it's the potential of doing it in the fiscal year 19 budget instead of 20, trying to bump it up. As well as the, it's sort of flipping the two, and the marketing plan would come from the recommendations from the economic development consultant. So the RFP is actually done for the economic development consultant, and after the meeting on the 15th, or, not on the 15th, the next council meeting.
19.
19, thank you.
Yep.
We'll be issuing the RFP if the council wishes. So we're moving forward with that. And finally, it's one of those quality of life. We are looking at the tax year property that we have. We're actually re-reviewing it as part of the economic development process too, to see what maybe potential development land out there. I know we are talking about bike lanes and also sidewalks, and expanding that, as the council is aware. We, when the state expanded the sidewalks up North Main Street, we provided additional lighting. And we're gonna be looking at putting some, like, street furniture, lack of better terms, not benches, but maybe granite blocks for people at the bus stops to sit at, to make it a little more palatable up that area. And so we are looking at that. And, you know, the waterfront plan, we'll have to look at that as a larger project. I know, just looking at some areas, including continuing, continuation of connecting the Riverwalk to the Heron Point Sanctuary, see if there's a possibility. So we are trying to, that's sort of like a blue-sky dream, but we are looking at it. So that's an update of what we are with the goals.
Anybody have any comments about the goals or progress towards completing the goals?
So I do have a question. And it probably ties into the first goal as well as the, as the third. And when we contracted with the, for the life of me, I cannot remember the name of the company, for the, for the energy savings.
Okay, yep.
What is it? E?
ESCO?
Yeah.
Energy Service Company.
So I guess that's one of, when I asked about the facilities review, I'm kind of curious where we're at with that as well.
For the performance contracting?
Performance contracting, yes. Thank you.
Yeah.
And just where we're at with that, because that kind of falls into both buckets.
It's part of this. It's part of this. It's part of the CIP process. It's just another way to fund the project.
Okay.
So it's not, we're not taking some projects out unless it's a priority that we may need to do this year because something's failing, but it will fall in to the regular CIP. So for example, we always use the one, the windows at town hall. It may not be a priority this year because it doesn't fall in, we may have to contribute more than what we get from the savings. So we have to look at the budget that way. However, if there's something that could be 100% funded, we'll bump that up and try and put it, but it will be part of the CIP process. It's not, these are now all one process. It's not separate.
So if, as a council or as a community, we wanted to look at some, maybe some bigger projects, things like exploring a solar array at the landfill?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's, something that's come up in a, certainly in the Energy and Environment Committee, and in a couple different ways, then would we hold off on that?
No, that's a whole completely different.
Completely different. Okay.
This is, if the council wishes to explore a solar array, then that's a whole different project. This is, this is just to do capital projects that we have in-house.
Okay.
A solar array, when you go out for RFPs for companies to come in, lease off the land, it's different than, like, building something.
Right. And I asked, because we talked about doing solar on some of our buildings also, and.
And again, that's different. That is, that does fall in versus a solar array.
Okay. All right.
Is the.
Is the, I'm sorry, I just want to quickly understand the difference. One, is it because one's assets we already have are a part of facilities?
Yep.
Okay. Got it.
The question I'd have on the bike plan, and I'm not saying it belongs in this goal. I just, one of the things that struck me though from the whole experience of going through is having originally on the 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 some of the planning and the hearings we went through on the bike path south of Newmarket on one oh eight. And I see your eyes lifted. It was painful.
Yeah. Reliving it.
But but anyways, on as far as that goes, I went to, because the the last time when they had one of their ten year plan sessions was here and you realize how much, I mean, I think myself, when I see the traffic down on on one oh eight south of town and the lack, the total lack of a bike thing there. I mean, the the amount of work and money spent to redo the road one oh eight north of Newmarket really re re needs to be replicated between one oh eight to Stratum, you know, on one oh eight to Stratum. And I think maybe that's something else that can be asked of the consultants. Should we be starting to make some noise about that with the state at some point? Or I don't know if you have any.
I'd wait a little bit after we won our lawsuit.
I'm not advocating for doing anything, I'm just advocating.
I don't want to do it, but you'll still do it, yeah. I think it's it, I think it's natural, it's going to happen.
Okay.
I don't think it's anything that we have to advocate at this point. I think, because what the there's two different, the reason why it came up was they wanted bike lanes. The widening of Route one oh eight is going to have to happen on the southern, on the southern part, no matter what. It's just too congested. I think and part of that is they're going to put in bike lanes, is normally what happens.
They wouldn't do it without at one without.
So I my sense is I don't want to open up the town at this point to go through the process we did last time. But I would, I think that they know it has to happen.
Yeah, okay. Seeing no other comments, I thank you very much for the update. And I was, we have ratified the goals and and that's that. So we move on to, let me find out, we'll come back here. The agenda. And we move to our committee reports. Okay.
So the CIP committee met just before this meeting tonight. Garch and I were both there. It was mostly an organizational first meeting. We elected a chair, which is Russ Simon. We postponed the vice chair because we didn't have all the members, so we decided to wait on that one. But it was mostly just getting our schedule together of when we're going to be meeting and reviewing along with just the housekeeping and kind of rules of engagement, so more to come.
So so what's your, what is your meeting schedule like that you?
Um, right now, we plan to meet on the seventeenth of September, which is a Monday between two to six. And then we're going to meet again twenty fifth of September at six P M. So.
So it's fairly intense for a while.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And there's going to be some facilities tours that they're coordinating. In the meantime, I think they're looking at next week to do some of those, so.
And the and the will it be as last year where the school kind of runs at the same time as the municipal CIP process?
Yes.
Okay. Any others?
Yeah, I have one. The Energy and Environment Committee met last night. And a couple of things, on Tuesday, October second, we're going to be having a button up program, which is sponsored through New Hampshire Saves. And it's for residents throughout the community. It's going to be here at six thirty in the auditorium. It's all about energy efficiency and ways to make your home more efficient. So that's our big news. And then we're still working on gathering information about a food waste composting program. So we're pretty close to being able to present to the council and and other people in the community, so.
And speaking of button buttoning up, there were, Eversource sent out an email, I'm going to say three or four weeks ago, mentioning that they had a program. You could call call Eversource to see if you were eligible for that. I don't know if that's anything when you're communicating with people about a button up program, whether you also mentioned that, you know, might want to list some others, you know.
Well, that's so so New Hampshire Saves is a is a.
Oh, this is through New Hampshire Saves.
It's through New Hampshire Saves, which so Eversource is a part of that, so, yep.
Well, good.
Yep.
That it's it for committee reports? Okay, we move on to Resolution twenty eighteen nineteen oh five, the Community Center gazebo pad. I would accept a motion to approve that resolution. And then the director of facilities will present afterwards.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen twenty nineteen dash oh five.
Second.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we're looking to get approval for putting a concrete pad and an ADA walk ramp into the gazebo that's located at the rec department. Currently, that particular area, when it rains, becomes unusable because it floods and turns into kind of a mud bath. So the idea is to pour a concrete slab in there, put a ramp in so that it can be used by everybody. And it allows us to use that that facility even in inclement weather. It is it is completely covered, so it does allow for those kind of added features. And as you may know, we're working on our splash pad. This does tie in very well with our splash pad project that we're working towards. So that the ADA ramp for that also will allow for connection to the splash pad. So it's something that we can get done all at the same time. It was an interesting bidding process. We had one bid originally, that bid was withdrawn. We went out to bid, we received no bids. So then we sat down and negotiated with a contractor who'd been doing some work for us here, the PD project, and negotiated a price with them. And it's kind of how we got to where we were. Just kind of hoping to have some real competitive bidding, but unfortunately just didn't get any. So we're asking to approve a the resolution utilizing impact fees in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred and fourteen with Lapodi excavators of North Hampton to actually construct the concrete pad and ramp.
Any questions from the council?
Just a comment, a couple of comments. And I was with both this resolution and I think the next one also was really happy to see that we're using impact fees and that we're dedicating that. The idea of returning impact fees makes me cringe a little bit. So I'm happy to see that that's being put to good use. And I know that our our rec department does some really fantastic work and is utilized by members throughout the community, so of all ages. So I think that this is a beneficial project for the town.
Obviously, there's a delay, so would the start date be April twenty nineteen?
No, we're actually going to get it done this fall.
Okay.
I'd like to get it done as soon as possible, actually.
Okay.
There were, really minor, but there were two pages in here where you were, there was a slight, what do you call it, Skriener's error or whatever, it it missing the, you know, it says the gazebo will be protected from damage with a four high safety fence. I think you meant four feet foot high.
Correct, yeah. During the, when it's poured, we want to keep people off of it so that it doesn't.
Right, it just doesn't say feet and it and the.
I apologize.
That's okay, but it's and you repeated it on page ten. So if you wanted them in there, because it's also thirty six across, not thirty six feet, so. Nothing more important. And I figured out it wasn't anything but feet, so. I'd call a roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Cast.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And moving on to Resolution twenty eighteen nineteen dash oh six, dedicate impact dedicate impact fees for the McIntosh and Tucker Wells Treatment Project and the Exeter's Road Sewer Main Improvement Project. Accept a motion for that, please.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen twenty nineteen dash oh six.
Okay.
Hi, thanks for having me tonight. The impact fees for the water and sewer department have to be used for expansion only. They can't be used to replace an old pipe, just to replace an old pipe. And we have some impact fees in the water and sewer that are, if we don't do anything with them, we'll lose them. And it's very difficult to find things because we're not expanding that much in the water and sewer. But through a study, we found out on Route one oh eight, which a lot of expansion is going on, there is a choke point of about two thousand feet of pipe that needs to be replaced. Below it is a ten inch pipe and above is a ten inch pipe. But the pipe that's actually in between is a six inch. So we're able to use these funds for that updating that pipe. And it needs to be updated. The other piece is the water. That is to expand the water supply for the McIntosh well project, which we discussed at the last meeting. Some good news is that they have passed a twenty five percent grant funding for the well project to the Drinking Water Trust Fund. So that's good news for us. And we're looking to try and get some more money from other places to reduce the cost of that project.
Questions, comments? Please call a roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Cast.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
And then I'd accept a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen nineteen oh seven, which is the to approve the Total Nitrogen Control Plan. And Sean, the director, will be here to discuss that.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen twenty nineteen dash oh seven.
Second.
Thanks for having me tonight. This has been a long project going on here. It's probably taken us about a year now to put this all together. Just to give a little bit of history and background on it, as part of getting the eight milligram per liter total nitrogen limit at the wastewater treatment facility, we agreed to do certain things. And one of the things was to produce a Total Nitrogen Control Plan, which is going to be presented by Renee from Horsey and Witten and from Neil from Wright Pierce. I hope that they'll give a presentation tonight. You guys can review the data through the past week and I'll come back for any questions at the next meeting. So right now, turn it over to them.
Thanks.
Sean, my name is Neil Cheseldean, and I'm with Wright Pierce. I've got Chelsea Dean also from Wright Pierce, and then Renee Bordeaux from Horsey Witten. You know that we worked closely with the town doing the wastewater treatment plan upgrade and now we've been working on the nitrogen control plan. I know you haven't had a chance to review the whole report yet, so I'll try to be brief. We don't want to, you know, belabor this. Can't guarantee we'll get done as quick as the CDVG hearing, but we'll try and get through things. But most importantly, we're here tonight to talk about what you want to talk about. So feel free to chime in with questions anywhere along the way. Don't feel you've got to wait. So I'll give a general overview. I'll pass it over to Renee. She'll she'll get into a little bit more of the details of how we went about doing things. And then, you know, as I say, along the way, any questions come up, feel free. What we want to touch on tonight, why is the plan needed? Short answer is nitrogen is the number one water quality concern in Great Bay and also the Lamprey River. So the focus of the plan is to control nitrogen and thereby improve water quality. Watershed loads and load reduction goals. Basically, we will calculate, we have calculated the loads into the river from the town of Newmarket and also the surrounding communities for comparison. And then talk about the DES load reduction goals that were assigned, that were developed a few years back in hopes of achieving the desired level of water quality. Talk about the ways, there's a variety of different ways that we can reduce nitrogen loads to the watershed. How we went about developing alternatives for comparison of how you might go about doing things. Explain our basis for coming up with the recommended plan and how we put together what we think is a reasonable schedule for you to implement that plan, balancing the regulators' desires to get things going as soon as possible against the town's own sort of, you know, limitations of things like public approval, funding, budgetary process, those kinds of things. And, you know, any other general questions that come up, we'll have time for that at the end also. So why is Newmarket doing a nitrogen control plan? Exeter is also doing a nitrogen control plan. We're actually doing that report as a team also. The big reason is because you both have wastewater treatment facilities that are federally licensed by the EPA. You got a new limit, a new permit limit with a new permit a few years back that included a new nitrogen discharge limitation that your plant wasn't designed to meet. So you violated that permit limit, which resulted in the administrative order being issued. I know this is a repeat for some of you, but we'll just kind of touch on it for the public as much as anything. What's interesting about your particular permitting action was that even if you had zero nitrogen in your discharge from your wastewater treatment plant, the EPA could not certify that the water quality criteria goals in the receiving waters would be met. So that put you in a little bit of a bind with being able to relicence your permits, your your plants, which meant that it also gave EPA a little bit more latitude to extend their reach into your town, your community. Normally, they can just regulate what comes out the end of that wastewater treatment plant's pipe. But because you couldn't guarantee that there was little enough nitrogen that the water quality would meet the goals, they were able to extend their reach into the non-point source sources of nitrogen, hence the beginnings of the nitrogen control plan. So you got issued an administrative order, which did a few things, including setting the timetable for upgrading your treatment plant to reduce nitrogen. It also set the interim limit for nitrogen at eight milligrams per liter versus the permit limit, which was supposed to be three milligrams per liter. There's a cost savings to the town staying at eight rather than being pushed down to three. And then it also set the the basis for doing a nitrogen control plan, what we're talking about here tonight. So as far as the outline of the plan, what do we do? We we calculate out the loads, baseline loads that were here before the treatment plant was upgraded, compare those to what other communities are putting out into the same watersheds, look at that in relation to the regulatory framework, which is basically why they can mandate that you do things. And also what the goals are, what reduction is the are the regulators looking for. Then we evaluate different combinations of ways to get rid of nitrogen, to reduce nitrogen, evaluate those with the end all goal of being dollars per pound of nitrogen removed, right? We want to get the most bang for the buck with whatever investment you put into these programs. So get rid of the most pounds of nitrogen by spend with with the dollars that you invest. So by putting, doing the evaluation, we're able to put numbers to the different types of approaches you may take. And then prioritize those that have the biggest bang for the buck. And then put together a reasonable schedule as I mentioned. And also, you know, they're not going to let you go at the end of this by just prompt making a bunch of promises. They also want to hold you to accounting for the projects that you do and and measuring the impact of those projects, the benefit of those projects. You will be obligated to sort of participate in what's called the PTAP program, which is the DES sort of coordinated regional approach to developing a database to keep track of projects as they get done that reduce nitrogen. So probably all have had a million water quality lessons by now. What does nitrogen do? Nitrogen's a nutrient needed for plant growth. We know that from gardening at home, right? And when you're in marine waters, typically the limiting nutrient that prevents plant growth, that controls plant growth is nitrogen. So if we're able to reduce the total nitrogen available, that reduces the total plant growth. These pictures kind of show you what happens when you get too much plant growth, nasty water quality, and sort of the more specific kind of list of certain particular water quality criteria that result. The end all, though, too much growth, diminished water quality, bad. So how does how does the nitrogen get to the water sources? There's a whole bunch of different places it can come from. There's a whole bunch of different places it can come from. And the relative amounts of those particular sources are going to vary from community to community based on what the land use is in the community and based on the characteristics of the community. So towns like Exeter and New Market, which have wastewater treatment plants, are going to have more wastewater loadings of nitrogen to the water, but probably less septic system sources of nitrogen because they don't rely so much on septic systems, where other towns that don't have sewer systems do rely on septic systems. So it's important to remember that people make nitrogen and all communities have people. You just happen to have a wastewater treatment plant with your people, which gives you a little bit more direct access to the regulators to be the leaders in this goal of reducing nitrogen loadings to the Great Bay. Once they, once it's into the environment, there's, it takes different pathways to get there and it gets attenuated somewhat on the way, which is good. So there's less total nitrogen than what we started with reaching the water. So a big part of what this whole study is about is a whole bunch of calculations and assumptions being made in, looking at different soils and different GIS-type data, which is what Renee does a lot of, in order to be able to calculate, all right, what is the true load of nitrogen reaching the water? Compare that to the load reduction targets and that sort of sets the basis for coming up with a nitrogen control plan. So I'm going to pass it over to Renee to kind of pour through a little bit more of the details of the study and also kind of the results and the recommendations.
I talk fast, so if I'm talking too fast, just let me know. So as Neil mentioned, I'm going to sort of go through sort of the nuts and bolts of the, the plan that you have in front of you. Again, we apologize didn't have it in advance, but I'm just going to try and do like an overview and not get into the details and we can save that for the next meeting. So again, this is just the coastal watershed, which includes Great Bay and includes a small portion on the bottom that also discharges to the Atlantic Ocean. And what I'm going to do is sort of start the framework of sort of, here's the total picture and then sort of zoom in as we get closer to New Market. So right now, it's estimated that approximately 1,285 tons of nitrogen per year is discharged into Great Bay. Of that, approximately 30% is from wastewater treatment facilities and the remainder 70% is from non-point source discharges. And you'll hear us say "non-point source" a lot. That's really stormwater, which runs off the surface, and then groundwater sources, which could be septic systems or water that infiltrates through the ground and makes its way into groundwater. Within the Great Bay, the Lamprey River watershed is within that, is within the Great Bay. And as you know, New Market discharges to the Lamprey River watershed. New Market also discharges a portion to the Exeter River watershed and a small portion directly to Great Bay. Of the 1,285 tons, 14% or 181 tons is from the Lamprey River to Great Bay. And of that 181 tons, only 19% is from wastewater treatment facilities and the remainder 81% is from non-point sources in the Lamprey River. And so of that, approximately 27% is stormwater and 54% is from septic systems.
Can I, if you had a question on that? I remember a prior talk on that. Isn't there, is it organic, inorganic? Are there some, two, two divisions of nitrogen and the, and the, so this, even though it's not as high a proportion, the, the, is it the organic percentage or the integratic percentage is more biologically active? And that is more from sewer plants, is that?
I believe that's correct, yep. And not all nitrogen is bad either. We're not saying like that just because there's nitrogen system is all bad and that's sort of.
Right. I, I, I mean, I, we don't have to get too much into the details, but there, some of that gets, some of that kind of detail gets so, you know.
That's correct.
If this is simplified.
Yeah, yeah, we're looking at total nitrogen here, but you're correct. There's, you know, the inorganic, organic nitrogen as well, which is kind of better than there. So of that load, New Market's contribution to Great Bay is approximately 3%. So when you look at the 52 communities that contribute to Great Bay, New Market makes about 3% of that total load. And then when you look at New Market's contribution to the Lamprey River, it's about 22% or 40 tons. And the remaining communities are approximately 78%. So when you look further down at New Market's contribution to understand sort of where the major load is coming from, approximately 71% is coming from the wastewater treatment facilities. And again, this is pre-upgrade. So we understand you're investing money, don't be worried. This is pre-upgrade. This is sort of like why the upgrade was taking place. And then the remainder, approximately 9% is from stormwater and then 12% from septic, no, 8% from septic systems and 12% from water that infiltrates into the ground.
So do you show that pie chart post?
We do in a coming up, yep.
Okay, thank you.
I think we do. I hope we do. Okay, yeah. Okay, and so we're going to talk a lot about load reduction and so I just want to set the framework for how we're determining that. So we have a baseline load, which we sort of just discussed with you guys, which is 43 tons. And then what we'll talk about is sort of reducing that load. And so you're all aware, currently, there's no regulatory limit for how much load the town needs to reduce. In 2009, New Hampshire DES conducted a study, which sort of set thresholds for the Great Bay as well as the tributaries. However, through litigation process, they are not allowed to use those values. So currently, there is no target for the community as far as how much nitrogen do we have to remove? And sort of, we took that in consideration with the plan. We don't want to over-obligate the town to remove nitrogen if there's no regulatory thresholds to do that.
When you say, when you say no, so there was no target for individual communities, but was targets for the overall watershed?
That's correct, but those are still not regulatory binding.
We're being televised. If you're not on mic, you can't get heard.
Yep, yeah, stop talking. I'm the principal. So there's, there were, there were regulatory targets that New Hampshire DES established for Great Bay as well as the tributaries. But again, those aren't legally, no one's legally obligated to use those this time. And they were never done by community. So it was never saying like, New Market, you remove 10 pounds, you know. Durham, remove five pounds, you know, other communities in the watershed, they weren't assigning those loads. But we're going to look at what was assigned, just to give you an idea of sort of where the Lamprey River stands with regards to these thresholds. And so there was three goals that were outlined in the study. The first one was a threshold of 182 tons of nitrogen per year, which was to protect Great Bay eelgrass. The second goal was 226 tons per year, which is to protect river dissolved oxygen. And the final goal was 140 tons per year for river eelgrass. So when you look at the watershed, again, this is the whole Lamprey River watershed. This isn't New Market. Again, it's, the, the total watershed, there was 181 tons. So when you look at the bars, the, the watershed is already meeting two of those goals that were set out. So really, there's only one threshold that the Lamprey River isn't meeting. And again, this is pre-wastewater treatment upgrade and that's to protect the local river eelgrass in the Lamprey River. Now, when you look at it post wastewater treatment upgrade, that bar comes down. So previously, in order to meet that 140-ton threshold, the watershed needed to move approximately 29% of the, the additional load. In post-upgrade, it's approximately 10%. So there's huge strides that have been made by the town in New Market when you look at this and the load reduction. I have that chart over here. I think it's like 52,000 pounds that have been removed just through upgrade of the plant when it's come, came online. So there's been substantial efforts that the town has made through the contributions that you've done with the plant. And we certainly want to, you know, in our plan, sort of commend you guys for the amount of effort you've done to reduce that load. So when we look at the post-wastewater treatment upgrade, this is sort of where we're at today. And we say, okay, if we wanted to meet the last threshold of river eelgrass, they'd really have to remove 10% still, which is about 29,000 pounds. Now, remember, this is the entire watershed also, it's not just New Market. So as part of our plan, what we wanted to do was say, okay, if New Market wanted to continue to sort of reduce their load and make a further impact, how could we do that? And so what we did is we looked at other sources besides the wastewater treatment plant. So we looked at what we call the non-point sources, so the stormwater sources and the groundwater sources. So what we did was with the town, we sort of went through and looked at all the sources that we thought were manageable, that the town could feasibly sort of manage, you know, or reduce. And what we looked at was agriculture management. So how could we better manage agricultural lands, looking at fertilizer managers, so both on town-owned properties as well as residential properties, street sweeping and pavement cleaning, leaf litter collection programs, stormwater infrastructure operation and maintenance is primarily catch basin cleaning, advanced onsite septic systems. So the septic systems that do remain in town, traditional septic systems are really designed for bacteria treatment and not nitrogen, but they do have advanced systems on the market now that do reduce nitrogen, so looking at that as an alternative. Targeted sewer extensions, are there areas in town that are currently on septic system that potentially would be prime candidates for extension of sewers? We worked with Sean to get a few, a list of a few communities that there has been talks about extending sewers to. And then finally, looking at implementation of stormwater best management practices on existing retrofit land as well as on new and redevelopment projects. Now, you'll see in some of these, there's asterisks as well as a little triangle. So the, the town currently is under, is obligated under the Niptes MS4 permit, which is a stormwater permit. And so some of the items that are in asterisks in the little triangle, the town's already going to be obligated to do those under that permit. So we really wanted to focus on those efforts because if you're already regulated, obligated to do those, we want to understand how much nitrogen you'd be looking to see reduced from those efforts. And so you'll see that's sort of where we really focus the plan. So when we did the plan, what we did is we wanted, we wanted to determine what was the most cost-effective way for the town to reduce nitrogen. So in the plan, you'll see, we did a big huge costing analysis and then basically we ranked the different, the different control strategies. And so here is just a list based on the cheapest to the most expensive. And you'll see on the top, I didn't previously mention this, but we looked at atmospheric deposition reductions due to the Clean Air Act. We understand the Clean Air Act is under a little bit of a, maybe diced up and changed a little bit, but we're assuming that it'll go forward as it's currently written and there will be reductions in nitrogen due to atmospheric deposition. So we just ranked these and you'll see that some of these, like for instance, the street sweeping and leaf litter collection program is pretty expensive. However, the town already really does these things. You know, you're doing street sweeping, you're doing leaf litter collection. So even though it is the most expensive, it's something you're already doing and you'll also be regulatory obligated to do under the MS4 program. So we still wanted to include that in the plan because it's something you're already doing and you're going to be regulatory obligated to do that. So we sort of used as a threshold to sort of figure out what, what, what could be done and how much nitrogen we could get removed from it. So we looked at three alternatives and we worked with the town to come up with this. The first one, alternative one, was to meet the minimum MS4 requirements. So we went through the MS4 permit and determined which measures would reduce nitrogen and which ones you could get credit for. So those ones we looked at and we quantified sort of a cost of pounds removed from that. The second alternative was, again, alternative one, plus if the town was to invest an additional $75,000 per year, what controls could they, would they invest in and sort of how much nitrogen load reduction would they get? And finally, was to look at an equivalent final permit reduction. And so basically, the town has a temporary permit limit of eight milligrams per liter. They've obligated to operate around five. However, we wanted to look at, if they went to the final permit limit of three, if we did that load differential between five and three, which is approximately 4,200 pounds, would it be cheaper to do that in non-point source or would it be cheaper to do it at point source? And so we just wanted to look at, is it feasible? How much would it cost? Not saying you'd have to do that, but we just wanted to understand the financial impact of that.
Just, so.
Yes.
When you're talking, when you made your calculations for the nitrogen reductions, are you basing it on, you know, the five number that we were saying we would meet with, you know, five, five parts? Is it parts per million, Sean?
Yes.
Yeah, because, because the numbers have been considerably below that.
They have. And so we just chose a conservative value. We just chose, I think it was 5.86 actually, which was based on data. We just collected a bunch of data earlier this spring and we took the average and it was about 5.86 and we just kept that number. We understand now that you're doing better than that, but we just chose a conservative value at some point in time. That's correct. We don't want to give Sean too many kudos. So you'll see, we, we did an alternatives analysis. So basically, we wanted to see for each of these alternatives, one, two, and three, how much delivered load will be removed, the percent load reduction, and then a life cycle cost. And we wanted to compare the three. So the first one, again, was just implementing the MS4 permit, which you're already going to be obligated to do. And you remove approximately 1,500 pounds, which is about a 6% reduction in that non-point source load. The second one is MS4 plus the $75,000. With implementation of that, you get about 1,800 pounds, which is a 7% reduction. And then the final equivalent, you know, the final permit term is the 4,200 pounds and it's a 70% reduction. But when you look at the dollars, you'll see in the first one, it's 4.8 million, the second one's 6.3 million, and the final one's 27 million. And then you look at the load reduction between one and two, I mean, 1%, you know, and 300 pounds, I mean, that's, you know, you could, someone could say it's in the margin of error. You know, it's, it's extremely small. And so, you know, we looked at that and said, you know, we want to be cautious on how we spend our money and make sure that our efforts are having an impact on water quality first. So again, comparing it to these threshold loads, so in the first, I'm sorry.
Well, I just, the, the one thing, and you may be going to address it either, but when you're looking at impacts of what New Market does on water quality, a big portion of the question, it seems like to me, is what are the other communities going into Great Bay? How are they, are they keeping up with New Market? Unless I knew, some of them were still fighting that, so it.
That's correct.
So to go on in a, a big amount of additional expense if we're not required to would be a hard, and I'm all for cleaning it up, but I think that's a hard sell.
That's correct.
Until you see signs that, you know, everybody's going to have to carry their load.
And we share this, that's the sort of the approach we're taking. We don't want New Market to be trailblazers in this by any means. You know, I think that the investments you've made at the plant, we, we want to understand is, you know, there's huge reductions that should be seen and we want to do some monitoring to understand if those reductions are being seen. And then basically, you know, the communities that are regulated under the MS4 program, let's implement that and see if there's any further reductions. But let's not commit ourselves to doing anything more than that. So again, this is just a comparison and you'll see on in the bar chart form, you know, that the differences between alternative one and two are, you know, are basically, you know, just 1%. And then alternative three, you know, basically what you're seeing is that there's not really that significant, there's not a significant reduction. You're not even really coming close to the 140 tons. But when you looked at, remember, we looked at these numbers, the dollar value investments were huge. Okay, so what did we put in the implementation plan that you guys have in front of you? And I think we've talked about this a few times in the answering the questions. So basically, you know, what we've obligated the town to do is basically, let's implement the MS4 permit as it's currently written for the town and sort of do your street sweeping, do your catch basin cleaning, and just implement the requirements the town is currently obligated to do. The second one is to continue refining operations of the wastewater plant. The chairman, you brought up the good point of saying, well, we've been getting numbers lower than that. So, you know, we're going to continue to work on that optimizing and see if we can get better numbers, like sort of drive our nitrogen levels down. We've committed to doing an in-stream water quality monitoring program. So the town has invested all this. It's really helpful to understand, is there going to be a water quality impact from that? And so the town is pushing forward to make an investment and sort of doing some monitoring within Lamprey River, both upstream and downstream of the wastewater treatment plant, to try and understand some of those impacts. Neil mentioned earlier participation in the PTAP program. So again, this is a tracking and accounting program. So basically, what it is, is all the communities within Great Bay are participating and it's just a mechanism to say, okay, here's what we've done in our community and tracking and sort of doing an accounting for sort of how much nitrogen could be expected to be removed from those actions. And then finally, this is, you know, the last bullet is a part of the AOC, which is sort of coordinate with New Hampshire DES for watershed allocation. So working with New Hampshire DES and the other communities in the watershed to try and understand and get everyone's involvement, so that everyone's paying their fair share and doing their own contributions for nitrogen reduction. We've included an implementation schedule you'll see in the back of the plan, which just says over the next, you know, couple of years, this is a requirement of sort of when you'll be doing stuff. Most of the, the first ones, sort of the non-point source strategies are basically the MS4 requirements. Now, because the town is a new permity, they really wouldn't be required to do some of these requirements till after this AOC period. So what we've done is sort of, and, and the town's doing most of these already. What we've committed the town do is just moving that timeline up a little bit to show that you'll be making strides to reduce non-point sources. And again, almost all of these, the town's already doing, so it won't be a significant change in behavior from.
I have a question.
Yes.
The town doesn't agree with the MS4 permit.
Okay.
And we are pursuing legal.
Okay.
Options with other municipalities across state. By approving this, are we saying we agreed to the MS4 permit as of today? Or is what the permit will be whenever they find a, if we're successful or for a negotiated settlement ever comes to be? I don't want to, I don't want to.
Yeah.
Tie the town.
Yeah.
To today's standards if we, all of a sudden.
Yep.
The permit changes.
Yeah.
That's my concern. I mean, if we could say generic, whatever the MS4 permit is, that's one thing.
Yeah.
But I don't want, I would not want to say we agree with the MS4 permit as of this date.
As of this date. Okay, let's, yeah. I think that's extremely important and I think it's something we need to take into consideration and make sure that the draft reflects that. So let's, I'll, we'll sort of go back to the table and look at that.
Okay, thanks.
To make sure that it's not legally binding you guys to doing that.
So we, we would target a limit, not say we like MS4, right? We would, right? Do we say, we say we target MS4, that means?
We're, we're, the town doesn't agree with all the, the problem with the MS4 permit, it was written for the state of Massachusetts. We are not the state of Massachusetts. We believe that there's a different standard should be for the state of New Hampshire.
Yeah.
We're, there's a number of municipalities who are appealing, including New Hampshire, including New Market, whether or not those standards should be for the same communities. I don't want, I don't think the town should tie itself.
No, that's correct.
To the current standards if we get lesser standards because they realize that we do not have the amount of impervious. services that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has. We do not have the same issues of development that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has. We're our own state.
Yep.
And that's my number one concern.
And so maybe we just need to sort of make sure the language reflects that it is the most up-to-date version in the requirements that affect nitrogen. So I think we can probably work on language and maybe just work together to make sure that that's consistent and the town feels comfortable with that.
So this is sort of apart from, when you talk about the appeal of the MS four, I remember when we voted to appeal the MS four, a lot of that was because as part of the whole change in administration, didn't the timelines for the MS four were almost accelerated for us?
It was. The MS four was literally issued the day before President Trump's inauguration because it was a concern of repeal as soon as it came in, so we could not do anything about it. There was belief that you're going to have to start paying, when the information is actually going to happen. It actually happened, again, I pulled up an article because I was making sure of the date, 4:00 PM on January 18th, which was two days before the President Trump's inauguration. So it was the at last, you know, I'm leaving today, here's the new MS four permits, new administration gets it. Yeah, it was sped up and that's our concern. We never had the chance to appeal, we never had the chance to make the case that we're not Massachusetts, who they basically cookie cutter the same situation.
So I mean, because, but when you just said right then, well, we're not Massachusetts, we don't have the non-impervious, the impervious areas that Massachusetts does, but going back to one of the nitrogen lectures I went to, Dover, for example, has a lot of impervious area. And so their nitrogen loads are pretty heavy. So I think, I wouldn't support any kind of appeal process.
But understand that Dover is one significant municipality where you're comparing Dover, Manchester, Portsmouth to Boston, Lowell, Lawrence.
Right.
Those communities, big difference between the two.
The only thing I'm asking is that, what, you know, as this appeal goes on, I think it's kind of interesting for the town to, for us all to be aware of what our position is as a town and understand what we're, what's happening. Because that was informative to me just now, what your comments you made and I have to think about that.
I think what we can do is just go back and reword this and just call them to say what we're doing and to continue with what we're doing and just formalize the plans on what we're doing.
Yeah.
And just not refer to it as a MS four.
Right.
And just of what we're doing at present. And we can go back and do that.
Yeah, I think that's good, yeah.
I appreciate that, but I guess what I'd like to be clear on is making sure that we're not appealing the MS four for reasons one, two, and three, and not including one and two and four in the plan and having this overlap where we're saying one thing but planning to do another, right?
That's my concern. I don't want to say, you know, we're appealing, and that's what I think we're going to come to is a way to word it that.
Yeah.
But I'd like to understand where the overlap is more clearly.
It's, there isn't one right now. Because right now, we're going with the MS four permit that we currently have, which we are appealing.
Uh huh.
We don't believe there's certain levels in there that we, as New Hampshire, should have to meet because it's not the same as Massachusetts. We can't, there's nothing in this that says, it just says generically the MS four. My concern was it says, say, the MS four of today versus of the one at point in time when we're.
I don't know if I'm being clear. We're saying we're appealing it because it's accelerated or because it's too costly or both.
Both.
Okay, so the too costly part is the part I'm saying may overlap. You know, we're saying it's too costly from the MS four perspective, yet we're going to, you know, we've got these alternatives here that we're going to go ahead with.
Well, I think the biggest thing is that we have to do this for our administrative orders. So we're kind of in a catch, you know, we have to do something and come up with a plan. And so how we word that, what we're doing, we don't want the conflict.
What we should say is basically, whatever the best is for the community. So if we win an appeal, that is the one we have to go to. If we don't, then we have to go to what we don't want. It's just, that's the situation. It's not, we're not going to put something in there that's going to be more stringent than what we have.
We can also just not refer to the MS four permit at all and just say, if the town is already street sweeping twice a year, we're just going to say we're going to continue street sweeping twice a year. It has nothing to do with the MS four permit.
We just, they're just using the term.
So I think we just rip the MS four permit out.
That's exactly, that's what I was trying to say. We just take that out, we just say what we're going to do.
Yeah.
Because it's just a plan.
And not tie it.
Yeah, exactly.
I think it would be clear even for us to, once that's done, because it's all based on, you know, your data and what's happening, and then once it's reworded, it'll become clearer and then we won't have that worry because we're doing what's needed based off of the data.
And just to follow, it's going to be a while before we get any final work on the MS four. I mean, it's, it's in the bowels of EPA in DC and.
Chaos.
Chaos, everything that we have to do. So it's going to be a while.
What's a while?
Years. I'm not even going to say how many, I don't know, but it's years.
And the big thing is, we are doing a lot of this stuff.
Yeah.
We just need to formalize a plan to say, this is what we're doing.
That's correct.
And this is how we're doing it.
Yep.
That's what it comes down to.
Okay. So we'll make those edits and then we can all agree that, I do agree, we can take that language out. Okay, moving on. So expected outcomes, so if we were to implement the plan as it's currently written in front of you, we would expect to see an additional TN load reduction of 6% from non-point sources. We've quantified an annual investment of approximately $241,000. Now, again, because you're doing most of these things, this is probably an investment that's already being had and it wouldn't be necessarily an additional investment. This is just how much it's cost to do the things you're already doing. Again, we talked about the huge load reduction from the wastewater plant. It's approximately 86% reduction from the wastewater plant. Instream water quality monitoring, again, the town's going to invest approximately $182,000 over the next four years to monitor in-stream water quality. And finally, sort of where we're all headed with this plan is also in the AOC. In 2022, the town is responsible for preparing an engineering evaluation to demonstrate trends in water quality and to determine whether they can continue to operate at the interim limit at the wastewater plant or whether they need to make other upgrades of the plant to get to the final permit limit. So really what we're trying to demonstrate is the town's making a lot of efforts and we want to continue showing that and demonstrating that over the next couple of years such that you don't have to make any more investments to the plant. And with that, we'll take any other final questions you guys might have.
Is, no, it's, what's the best place currently? Now, this is again, almost a little bit off topic, so I apologize, but in terms of understanding what's going on, is there, is there going to be at some point a compilation almost of all of these reports to show the entire baywide what the, what the, because Portsmouth is replacing, you know, their sewer plant, other towns, you know, I think.
So prep, which is sort of an, I'm sure.
The Scaticlo region.
Yeah, so they're doing monitoring, so, of the Great Bay. And so hopefully, once all these plants come online and they're upgraded, we'll see, there will be hopefully some reduction seen. And they do a report every five years, sort of that compiles that data and information. So I think from a, you know, Great Bay wide, that's sort of, I think where we'll probably see some of that data come up. And Sean, do you want to add to that?
Well, I think the biggest thing is we're part of PTAP, which is that program where we monitor the nitrogen reductions. Dover's part of that, Portsmouth is part of that. Mike enters that in on the computer, on the computer whenever changes happen through town. So that's all getting compiled into one location. That's all being done by the state and by the stormwater at UNH. So you're going to see a lot more of that.
Okay.
I know EPA had a data sound out on our river for last year, which compiled some data. So they were trying to get some data pre-wastewater improvement treatment plant, and now they're out on the Exeter trying to get some data there. So the big thing now is we've spent all this money, we were putting 60,000 pounds of TN into the river from the wastewater treatment plant, now we're putting about 5,000 in the river. That's a huge reduction. We need to kind of look and see what that's doing. Because I don't think anybody, yes, we have all this data, I don't think everybody truly understands what nitrogen's doing.
So then the plan from here, you have a few edits and at the next meeting, we'll get a, the version of this plan distributed to us with the packet.
Correct.
With the edits in it and.
Procedurally, what you should ask the council, if there's no objections, to hold this resolution over for a third reading.
Okay, do we vote on that?
Nope. If there's no objection, you can just move forward.
So what we'll do is we'll go back and reword it and we will show you what it said before and what it said after.
Yep.
So you can see both.
Right.
And with that.
Page 26, which is a graph of the total load of the load by community, let's hear the word watershed.
Yep.
Shows different towns.
That's correct.
Epping and Nottingham are almost, I'm reading this correctly, almost double. But we're.
Yes.
That's correct. And remember, they're fully septic, unseptic. No, Epping's not. Epping has a plant, that's correct.
Epping has a plant.
And they're not part of the spill.
Yes, they have waivers.
They have waivers.
So they don't do anything to.
They're not regulatory obligated to do anything.
Bring the.
Yep.
Bring it down.
In some cases, and correct me if I, I remember a few things from my limited education on that, but one of the things that, I mean, I think that's a problem, but it's also true that the, one of the things that's nice about the Lamprey being as sort of wild and scenic as it is, is in some cases, stretches of water, you would see a reduction in the nitrogen in the river because natural processes can remove nitrogen in some cases. If I'm correct in that, do you understand what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying, yeah.
So in some cases, you, some of the upstream ones may be mitigated somewhat before they reach the bay, maybe not to, this is a pretty big amount, so I'm not saying that's what's going on.
If I remember right, the rivers are in tougher shape than the bay.
Yeah.
Is that right? Bay, it doesn't take a lot to reach water quality in the bay compared to the rivers.
Well, then I totally withdraw that comment.
Well, I mean, what you're saying, like if you're at the headwaters of the Lamprey right and you're one community contributing up there, the input may not be as bad, but as you get down to the mouth where you guys are, you have everybody's contribution, it looks pretty bad.
So in a sense, for the quality of the river, it's a big problem that Nottingham and Epping have not, are not being required to do more. Sort of politically, to get the benefits of Newmarket's investment, more communities are also going to.
Yeah, it's a watershed problem.
Yes.
It's not just one community. And sort of this is what we're trying to show here, is that, you know, Newmarket's done their fair share. When you look at non-point sources alone, they're not in the top five. You know, there's other communities that aren't regulated, that aren't doing their fair share.
So the stormwater structural BMPs?
Yep.
I'm just looking at the description on page 24, and those are for town-owned properties only, right?
That's correct.
Where that measurement comes from.
And that's, they just have to create a list, basically, which says, you know, here's our town properties, here's where you could potentially do a retrofit. You're not obligated to do anything, but just make a list. And those are town-owned properties only, that's correct.
Because we are looking at, as Diane, the planner knows, we're working on changing the regulations too.
That's correct, yeah. For private well.
For private.
Yep, but that's excellent. Then you're.
It's to get to the net change.
That's correct.
And it's the same goal.
Yep.
So, okay. I don't know how we, whether we can throw that measurement in somehow or.
So I would say we want to keep this probably as.
Just for town.
Simple as possible. There's things that the town can do above and beyond this.
Yeah.
On your own will. I think it's just better to not commit yourself to doing something in this plan, but you're more than welcome to do as many other nitrogen reduction things as you want.
And we are doing some because the wastewater treatment plant actually has a, has one.
Yep.
So it's brand new, it takes on the drainage.
Yep.
I know on New Road, we're actually looking to upgrade the drainage and there's supposed to be a treatment pond as well to reduce nitrogen. So there are areas when you upgrade that you can put these things in.
Right. And that's the key thing, is just kind of being opportunistic about it. If you're doing a project, looking to see if a BMP can be put in at that time, because you're not going back and trying to retrofit something you already constructed five years ago.
Can I ask for just a quick history lesson?
Yep.
So, and this goes back to these other towns, because I don't know, it's just bugging me. Were these communities that fought the, no, it just, they just weren't regulated at the time?
So, so how you're regulated under the MS four permit is based on density, so an urbanized core, basically. And so by the, it's defined by the census. So the 2010 census, if you didn't have a residential density in your town that exceeds a certain amount, you're excluded. Now, there's communities that are on this graph in Figure 13, which are green, and basically, they've received waivers. So you can petition to not be included, saying, we're a small town, we only have country drainage, which is basically no catch basins, no pipes, and you could receive a waiver. And so the communities in green met the condition of the census, however, petitioned for waivers and received those waivers.
Thank you.
Does that make sense? Okay.
Just to add, if you look at one of the two on the right-hand side, I think they probably, sorry, the waiver process prior to their economic boom, when they had a significant amount of box stores and other buildings put in. So that's partially why they probably got, able to achieve a waiver.
Well, the thing is too, is it's only for residential.
Right.
So even if, like, so for instance, like if you look at a place like Stratum, right, their entire commercial district is outside of the MS four district because it's based on residential density. So Epping, I think they got the waiver in 2010. So it was after sort of the Walmart and the Lowe's and all of that, but because that's not a residential core, they can sort of petition that.
Right.
So there's been a lot of talk about changing it to impervious cover.
Yeah.
Because then you capture some of those areas, but it's, like, if you look at the town, like the city of Concord, New Hampshire is not an MS four because their downtown is not, doesn't meet the residential criteria. So there's always a big.
I knew the TA when they started. They're peeling it. It was me.
They received another one in 2010, right? They received one, another one.
They did. It was, yeah, I was the guy left in '08, so it was right before, that's when we started.
Yeah, yeah. So, but it is, it is interesting and, you know, it's something to keep, you know, so to present to EPA saying, like, we're aware that, you know, these other communities are receiving waivers and not doing their fair share.
Yeah. We were kind of disadvantaged in how classifications have been made.
We did receive a grant, $75,000, 50% grant to do sampling. So that's one thing I got to finalize with DES. So we do need to get a bond vote for that because it's a loan, but we can budget the money and just pay it off. So I think the first year is about $60,000 to do sampling in the river because you have to buy the equipment first, but it'll be offset by 50%.
I think, so the, the plan is, is that this will be held over for a third reading. We don't have to vote on that and I've heard no objections to doing so. So I think we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we move on to new business. There's no nominations, appointments, or elections, and...
I have a resolution for me.
Go ahead and read that, please.
Resolution is a first reading. Resolution two thousand eighteen nineteen-eight designated the second Monday in October Indigenous Peoples' Day, whereas the town of Newmarket recognized the indigenous people who have occupied the land that would later become known as the Americas for thirteen-thousand years, and are Native Americans that originally, that originally inhabited this land called Wabanaki People of the Dawn, and whereas the town of Newmarket acknowledges that Newmarket is built upon the homelands and villages of the indigenous people of this region, and whereas human history suggests that individual or systematic acts of aggression and intolerance towards other engendered only further hostility, discord, and destruction of lives, and whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in nineteen seventy-seven by a delegation of Native nations, the Native Nations sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas, and whereas the United States federal government, the state of New Hampshire, and the town of Newmarket recognized Columbus Day on the second May, Monday of October in accordance with the federal holiday established in nineteen thirty-seven. And whereas the town of Newmarket desires to celebrate both the indigenous peoples that